Welcome you this evening to Monday, January 7th, 2019, Commission Meeting. And we'll open the meeting with our invocation. And Vice Chairman Dennis Rafe.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we ask you tonight to bless us with courage and wisdom, and put your holy hand of protection on all our law enforcement, EMT, firemen, everybody that works tirelessly every day to protect Union County. We ask you to give us the wisdom to do what is right. And I ask that we have a heart of thanks for living in a country and a county like Union County. Please guide and direct us, and I thank you so much for your ever-loving son that you sent to die for us. Amen.
Amen.
Before we get started, I want to welcome our new county manager, Mark Watson, his first meeting with us, and we're looking forward to great things this year.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Great. First item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing, CZ 2018-008 Sheriff's Office Regional Training Facility. This is a request to amend the zoning map of Union County by rezoning a parcel of land from RA 40, which is residential agricultural, 40,000 square feet, minimum lot size, to RA 200 CZ residential agricultural, 200,000 square foot, minimum lot size, conditional district. This request is approved. If approved, will allow for the Union County Sheriff's Office to develop a regional training facility for use by the Sheriff's Office and other law enforcement agencies. Major components of the training facility will include an indoor shooting range, K-9 area, driving pad, outdoor rifle range, shoot house, and outdoor fitness area. Union County Planning Board considered the zoning request at their December meeting. They heard a presentation from the applicant and heard from one citizen who asked if the project would change her zoning and whether the property would decrease her property value. In addition, she expressed concern over traffic. Sheriff's Office represented and discussed the use of the property by other outside agencies and his expectations that additional traffic would be minimal and only during those specific training days. Staff explained that the zoning of the property and the area included her property would not be changed. There is no minimum information potential property. After discussing the property, Planning Board made a recommendation to the Board of County Commission to approve the rezoning request. The vote was four oh for recommend and approval. And this is like a public hearing, and no one has signed up to speak at the public hearing, so I'll open it and then I'll now close it without one speaking. Next, we'll address additions and deletions. Yes. Okay. Brian, did that cover everything?
Yes, I mean, we do have Mr. Jensen here to give a presentation of the project. If the board would like to see it.
Love to see it.
But you have some information that's sort of.
No, love to see it. Come on.
All right.
Don't want to miss our opportunity to see your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that the board have that on record for the public hearing. So there was no motion to close the public hearing, so I would consider these statements part of the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation.
You realize the football game starts today.
I do. I wait for the screen to drop.
Is that right, Jeff? Is that what I'm supposed to?
As you stated, this is a conditional rezoning request to RA 200 conditional. The main reason for the request is the majority of the things or everything on the property can be done if it's just the Sheriff's Office using it, but they want to open up the facilities to some outside agencies, and that does necessitate a rezoning of the property. I'll just, I'll run through this briefly. These are just some pictures of the property on the site. This is looking north along Mills Harris to the top left and south. It's a pretty rural area. There are no major municipalities. Wingate is to the south, going along Mills Harris Road, but otherwise, this is just all unincorporated Union County. As you can see from this map, this is very, this kind of dark green color is undeveloped and kind of that light green is underdeveloped property, so it is very rural out in that area. Primary zoning is RA 40 or R 40. It's one unit per acre for residential purposes. There is a creek that goes through the property that's got some flood plan on it. That's the only major environmental feature associated with the property. The only traffic counts in the area are along Monroe Ansible Road. You can see kind of right before the, kind of that five-point intersection there, you've got about 2,300 cars per day, which is not a whole lot. There were no traffic counts on Mills Harris, but it would be, it would be less than that 2,300. And then as far as the land use plan goes, we've kind of got an intersection of three different categories here. Primarily, this falls in the agricultural area, which is designed to sort of perpetuate the use of the areas as agricultural, agricultural areas. That being said, most of the area is not served by major utilities. There's not a lot of sewer around the area. There is some water nearby, but for the most part, that area is served by well and septic. And like, I think as you already said, the Planning Board considered this at their last, their last meeting, and they made a recommendation to approve this request by a vote of four to nothing. And even though it is inside that agricultural designation, the area will be, the RA 200 is low density, and the design of the buildings and such that's going to be on the property, we don't feel will detract from the agricultural makeup of that area. And this is a concept plan that the Sheriff's Office submitted to us. And again, everything on this plan can be done by right if it was just the Sheriff's Department. So I want you guys to take that into consideration when you're making your deliberating, but this is primarily what you see here. The shoot house, which is the first thing that you see, that's already there. There's a, there's a metal building that's an indoor shooting range. You have another shoot house, which is an open air facility where they can go in and kind of run through the shoot house. You have a kind of a picnic shelter, outdoor, kind of open air for events. Have some classrooms. The four, five, six, and seven are mobile classrooms. And then number nine is a K-9 area for K-9 training. And then you have a training building, which I believe will replace those quads when it's built, and a driving pad to practice pursuit type, type activities. And 13 is the training vehicle maintenance area to basically maintain all the vehicles that are used on that driving pad, so if they need to replace tires or things like that. And then 12 is the outdoor rifle range, and you also have 14, which is an outdoor fitness area, and then a woodland, woodland ops. So I just wanted to run through that really briefly with you. I think the Sheriff's Department is here. I'm not sure if they're going to give a presentation, but I believe they probably, if they do, they probably will request if there's no opposition or if the board wants to, that they put this on for a decision tonight. Any of you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I think we're okay. Todd, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
No, sir. We're good. We appreciate y'all's support. Thank y'all.
Okay. And I'm going to close the public hearing. I will say, Todd, I really appreciate your approach to working with other agencies to ensure that we're all protected. We want every officer to be safe, be trained well, and we're excited about having this facility here. Appreciate y'all's approach there.
Thank you.
Additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda. I'd like to move that we add an item to the consent agenda. Submittal of the Board's resolution concerning 2018 Ninth District Congressional Election Court system passed this out earlier. And then.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull number four off of the consent agenda and let Public Works present some stuff that I talked to them about today, just for information for the commissioners.
Okay. Okay. Any other additions, deletions? Any discussion?
Motion to approve is amended.
Okay. A motion to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll put item four, we'll move it to 15A, which is, 15A is old business, so we'll cover that there. Okay. Yes, ma'am. This evening, we had no informal comments. Is anyone would like to make, make a statement during informal comments? Okay, we'll move on. Our consent agenda. Is there a motion? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve is amended.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So the next one is old business, which is where we put number four. Dennis, would you like to talk to this, please, sir?
Since coming on the Board, it has been an experience, a good experience, but there's been a lot of catching up on information. And I believe Scott Honeycutt told me that we had combined two years of funding and they have requested us to authorize a bid to replace three different projects of water line. Two of them are, that I know of, are two-inch line that was put in 30 years ago, and I certainly understand. What I wanted him to come in and present to y'all tonight about is when the water line is replaced on Zeb Helms Road, they make a right turn that will go up 75, probably approximately 1,600 feet, to a line to nowhere that was put in about 10 years ago or was authorized that comes from Newtown Road to the property that was formerly owned by Mr. Rosenberg, but he has since brought city sewer to it. So my question is if, when we get to the end of Zeb Helms Road, we could loop it back to Fletcher Broom Road where it would intersect the line? And there's 12 houses there that have very limited water. They all have wells, and I just wanted to bring it before the other commissioners so we could really talk about something that maybe if we could modify this somehow. I think this, if we turn right and go to the big feeder line that comes under Seaboard or CSX, it's a water line that will probably go nowhere. There's a solar farm on one side of it, and we know that's 30 years of usually a 30-year lease. Elizabethan Gardens Road has been condemned and closed. I had asked Mr. Honeycutt if he would come present it to us because we had quite a, if you would come up, you can sort of show them. And I realized this is sort of at a late date, but I had talked about it when I first came on, and it just sort of slipped up on me.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, my name is Scott Honeycutt, Engineering Director for Public Works. What I wanted to just give you was a brief, I've got four slides, so I'll keep it really short. But what the project contains, where the lines go, as Dennis was alluding to, and a little bit of background. The FY 18 galvanized project in total includes 9,700 feet of new water line construction. If you look on the map, you can see it's split into two primary areas. One east of Unionville, it's on Honeycutt Simpson Road. We're replacing about 1,800 feet of two-inch on that road as well. The other area is Zeb Helms and 75, and also includes Fletcher Broom Road. The goals for the project, there were three of them. We wanted to replace two-inch lines that exceed 1,000 feet in length, and that's driven by the North Carolina Administrative Code that says two-inch lines, public water lines cannot exceed 1,000 feet in length. We also wanted to upsize these lines to provide fire protection and include fire hydrants and improve system hydraulics by creating some loops. And that'll be, I'll do a blow up of the Zeb Helms Road where you'll see that. The bids we received on December 18th, they're good for 60 days. The low bidder was Fuller and Company Construction. The bid price was $996,729.14. So when you look at our existing water map of the Zeb Helms, Fletcher Broom Road area, we have approximately 16,000 linear feet of two-inch water line on Zeb Helms Road. It comes all the way from current Church Road to where it's north. We've got another 1,400 linear feet of two-inch on Fletcher Broom Road. This map delineates five existing dead ends. We've got two dead ends on Fletcher Broom where we don't connect. We've got a dead end on Zeb Helms Road. We've got a dead end on Gray Pond right here at Zeb Helms, and a dead end up at Highway 75 at Elizabethan Road. What we're proposing includes completing those loops, 42,000 feet of new pipe on Zeb Helms, 1,600 feet on Highway 75, and additional 2,100 feet on Fletcher Broom. What that does is it eliminates our two-inch water lines that exceed 1,000 feet currently. It will provide fire protection to existing customers in that area, as well as it eliminates all five of those dead-end loops or dead-end water lines. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Would you leave that?
Yes.
My only question, Commissioners, is I think it's about 400 feet difference if we turn left and go back to Wax, I mean, to Fletcher Broom Road. We would make water available for 12 residences that all have wells now and not that good water. If we turn right, as the plan proposes, the track across the road, across Seaboard to the north, it's a solar farm right there where it says Waxall Highway, that land has already had county water. I mean, a city sewer run to it, to the edge of it. Now, I talked with Mr. Honeycutt about the little line at the top from Newtown over to 75. He said that's dead water, and then after a couple hours, I called him back, there is a valve there that we could cut that line off. And I realized the problem with dead water, you just don't want stagnant water, but it just seems like to me we're spending money to complete a loop that will never serve nobody when we can go down Waxall Highway and serve 12 people. And a lot of those people have lived there their whole life and still don't have county water.
That, that line on Elizabethan was put in in about 2002 timeframe by developer. It was for the purposes of serving a development here. That never happened. So it is, it is a dead end. We've got a fire hydrant on, on that leg we used to use for bulk haulers to connect to, to try to keep flow moving. As Dennis said, when the developer extended it, he did tie in on Newtown with a valve. That line has been active. To my knowledge, it's still active today. The purposes of making that tie-in does benefit us in, when we're trying to, in emergency conditions where we're trying to move quantities of water from one pressure zone to another. It lets us bring water to the south from the north, so there is a benefit there. And it was, it was designed that way because it was, the pipe was already in the ground and it was a dead end.
But wouldn't going to the left give us the same loop capability?
It, well, it'll, it'll tie into existing water on Fletcher Broom at Highway 75, so it would bring water through that way as a loop. We'll still have to do something with the line on Elizabethan.
But there is a valve on Newtown Road where we can cut it off, and then we would not have stagnant water that can leak back into.
Yes, there is a valve at Newtown.
Seaboard Coastline or CSX requested and the county closed that road. They have, they've done away with the grade crossing and everything, and people have quit using that hydrant that much because they have to pull in there and then back about a quarter mile out. And I asked Scott, I said, why did we get this far? And I believe you said an outside engineering firm actually.
Yes, we hired an outside consultant to do this design. Again, with the goals that I've stated earlier, it wasn't for maximizing new customers, it was to complete loops and tie in to those dead ends.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions. I certainly appreciate what Commissioner Rafe is saying. I guess a couple of questions, and you can, I'll rattle them off, and then we can figure out how you want to answer them. First of all, have we talked to those 12 individuals? Do we know if they have any interest in connecting to the water? Second question is, have they ever applied through our short water policy, extension policy to receive funding for that? And third, what is the cost? And fourth, how does that factor into our short water line extension policy? So you take it however you want.
I can, I think I can answer maybe two, three, and four. So we have not heard anything from those 12 individual homeowners. They have not signed up currently on our short line extension list. That's not to say they couldn't come in and sign up, but they're not on the current list. That footage is about, I believe, 2,500 linear feet coming from Zeb Helms all the way back. If you look at our low bidder's price for the pipe that he bid on Highway 75, you're looking at ballpark of around $150,000 construction cost. Keep in mind, that, that water line would have to be engineered, surveyed, the permits would have to be modified, so there's some other expenses that would have to happen in order to get that line to a point where we could, could bid it and build it.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I definitely see what Commissioner Rafe is saying with just coming on along, down Waxall Highway. Looks like there would be less line involved. Are there houses here on this? I see a lot of lots, but I'm not seeing any houses. I don't know if there's houses or not. On Zeb Helms, as you go down through there, there's, are these smaller lots, there are houses there? There are some houses on those lots on Zeb Helms. And, and one thing that we've talked about in our, in our water issues that we're going to be bringing up over the next few months, I think, is that, you know, Waxall Highway would be probably one of the definite, definite main roads of coming down anyways. So if you guys need to do this project now, it's already bid out, and then we come down and through there, we may solve that with another, with another way. If, if you're telling me that you've got to eliminate that line anyway, then do we have to eliminate that two-inch line? Well, it doesn't meet current state regulations. So our galvanized program, we were very successful early on. We started in 2012. For the last six years, we've replaced about 90% of our galvanized pipe. So we've gotten it out of the system with, with new lines. But we, the program also identified small inadequate lines to be replaced, and that's the category I would put these in. They're, they're serving a purpose, they're there, they have customers on them, but they are greater in length than the current state rules require.
Commissioner Rafe.
Scott, now, when that line was, is it galvanized or PVC, the one that's?
Uh, PVC.
So I told him, this thing's kind of misleading. It's galvanized replacement, but we're not replacing galvanized. There's PVC in the ground.
Yes, we've been replacing galvanized since 2012. Like I said, we've gotten a lot of it out of the system.
Right. But this is PVC.
This is PVC.
And this line was legal when it was put in the ground, 30 years ago.
I would hope so. I mean, I wasn't here then, but I would hope so. Is it going to mess us up? Or is it going to mess up anything, getting an idea of, because it looks like it would actually be less expensive just to go down to Fletcher Broom Road. It's actually more footage from Zeb Helms. If you, if you go to where the, the project is identified to Elizabethan, it's about 1,600 feet. If you look at going from Zeb Helms back to Fletcher Broom on Highway 75, it's about 2,500 feet. So it is a little bit longer footage.
But either way, you'd have to, to go back toward Fletcher, you'd have to rebid that peak portion?
I think there's several options that, that we could look at. One would definitely be to rebid that. Again, we'd have, it'd have to be re-engineered, it'd have to be re-permitted. We could look at it as a standalone project, if that's what the Board desires, and treat it that way, separate from this current project that we bid. We could reject these bids, if that's what the Board wants to do, add that into the project and then rebid the entire project. I will say, that's probably not my preference because construction cost continues to escalate, it seems like daily.
Let me say this. I told Scott today, I would, you know, I'm, I'm in support of getting this done the way it's presented, but it just, when you start looking at what we're doing, it just, you know, I wish in the future, you know, I realize it's right ready to people start breaking ground, and it just, it bothered me that we didn't look at the potential of going one way or over the other.
Yeah, and again, the consultant went to the right because we were trying to get those dead ends tied back in, looped together so that there's improved system hydraulics, redundancy, reliability for emergencies.
But then again, if the developer hadn't put that water line in 2002 in, we would go the other way. So sometimes, even though he pays to do something, you have unintended consequences in the future.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Russian.
And I think, you know, when Barry and I sat down when he was still here, we looked at that kind of answer by going through, like when your connection can be made with more houses there, trying to get that done. But I think, like I said, we will be working on this with what we're looking at for the future, so I'm willing to support the statute recommendations if the rest of Commissioners are. I don't have any problem with that. But like what Mr. Commissioner Rafe said, we should be looking at that, trying to serve as many customers as we can when we're doing projects like these in the future.
Can, can we make a part of the acceptance of this, because I approve what you're doing, but also ask that you go back and bring us a bid proposal to tie that Zeb Helms back over to Fletcher Broom down the highway?
If that's the direction of the Board, we can, we can pursue, pursue that as a, as a project.
Because as Commissioner Russian says, we need to focus on getting water to our public. Commissioner Agnes.
And I, I support what both of you are saying. I guess my only concern is I
I guess my only concern is, I don't want to see us run a line if no one's going to connect to it.
I agree.
So I think we need to know if there is interest from the residents there before we go expending or approving any funds to be expended, if there's going, if that line is actually going to service someone.
Yeah, and I think that's the problem, is like on Zeb Helms Road, there's not many houses there, but we're running a lot of line versus if we're going to, you know, if we're going to run line, run it by those properties that have actual houses on them, you know, because I'm in agreement, you know, if nobody wants it, then that'd be a concern. But if they do want it, and the benefit of it, of running by there is potential customers versus definitely not potential customers going the other way.
Commissioner Rafe?
Frank, I agree with you. The only thing, and the reason I agree with you, that 1,600 feet does not have a house on it. And it probably, when it's, when it does have houses on it, since they've got city sewer on the lower side of it, it will probably be city water. So I'm saying we can go, and I will, you know, I will make the people aware that they need to start talking to Public Works, but we're running 1,600 feet. I told Scott, it's the water line to nowhere.
Well, and potentially what you're proposing, though, could be a water line to nowhere. And so that's, I'd just like to have the facts behind what we're doing because it sounds to me like it's cheaper the way we're doing it right now. No one's being served, but if we're going to change it and no one's still going to be served, we're going to pay more. So I just want to know that there's an actual desire. And then I go back to, we do have a policy in this county on a short waterline extension. So how are we going to change that policy or make an exception in that policy, or is that the plan of the board? And, you know, I just, we've had a waitlist for our short waterline extension policy for years in this county. And I think if we're, before we go expending any of those potential funds, we need to know if somebody actually wants that. And are we putting another resident off that maybe does want it, and now is not going to be able to get it because we're arbitrarily deciding to change our plan?
Well, let me offer this, Scott said the bid was given December the 16th.
December 18th.
18th. And it's valid for 60 days.
For 60 days.
So we even talked about delaying this till our mid-month meeting. And if we could get 12, I mean, you know, we, I would have no problem, I support it, and I don't want to hold it up. But if what you need is the people on 75, the existing homes, and those are older homes, most of them are people 65 and above.
And again, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, but I go back to, we have a policy, and how is that going to legally, are we impacting or affecting that policy? I'm all in favor of getting water to as many people as we can, but I think we've got to remember, we do have a policy. We've turned people down because of a waitlist. And so, you know, if staff feels like they can bring all that information back, I have no problem postponing it and voting at a later date.
It wouldn't impact the problem to put it off till the mid-month meeting, would it, Scott?
No, the bids are good for 60 days.
Okay. I'll make a motion then for us to table it for two weeks and.
Do that evaluation.
Do that evaluation.
I think we'll also need input from legal on that policy since it exists. So I'd want to make sure that that was included in our discovery.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion presented?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's pass this down. What I'm passing down is a motion for the sheriff's range to add it. We'll have to vote to add it. So I'll make a motion that we add the, an item to approve the rezoning petition of CZ 218-008 to rezonate property period on tax map as parcel 02202008 in Marshall Township from RA 40 to RA 200 CZ and adopt the consistency statement. First is a motion to accept and.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And make a motion to approve the aforementioned zoning we just read. Any, plus a consistency statement for approval. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And next we have new business. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, Item 16 includes two resolutions for adoption by the board. One resolution certifies the results of the 2018 Union County General Obligation Referendum indicating approval of $42,160,000 of bonds plus interest for the sheriff's office expansion and renovation and an emergency services complex. Additionally, there is a reimbursement resolution that will allow for expenses incurred associated with the sheriff's office expansion and renovation and the emergency services complex prior to the date of the issuance of these bonds. We are seeking approval of these resolutions. And staff is available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution certifying the results of the 2018 Union County Geo Referendum and adopt reimbursement resolution for 2018 voter-approved general obligation bond?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is 17. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, Item 17 includes a resolution for adoption by the board. This resolution will allow the county to incur and pay expenditures in connection with these projects prior to the date of the issuance of the bonds. SPCC has begun construction on their project within the past few weeks, and we anticipate the library project moving forward with site selection and design in the next month. We are seeking approval of this resolution. Staff is available if you have any questions.
Is there a motion to adopt reimbursement resolution for community college and library geo bond projects?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're getting close to that football game. Mr. Manager, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have some comments. As this is the first regular meeting of 2019, I was reflecting upon the accomplishments of staff in the previous year. I was thinking about the contributions that all of our staff has made over the past year, their achievements, the projects that we have successfully completed. And there's just one way to sum all of that up, is we finish strong. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of the employees for a job well done in 2018, and we look forward to the accomplishments in 2019. In addition, it is my pleasure to announce the promotion of Assistant Human Resource Director Julie Brun to the position of Executive Director of Human Resources effective today. Julie came to Union County as an HR Generalist in 2003, was promoted to Assistant HR Director in 2006. She's a native of Union County, a graduate of Sun Valley High School and UNC Charlotte with a Bachelor of Arts degree in psychology and 24 years' experience in the human resources I'll tell you that it's been my pleasure to work with her, and I don't believe we could find any better to serve in that role. So please join me in celebrating her success and accomplishment. Finally, I'd like to welcome home Union County Sheriff's Deputy Frank Evans from active-duty overseas deployment. Sergeant Evans served with the 878th Engineer Company of the Army National Guard and has been deployed since February 17, 2018, so just shy of a year. And he was deployed in Iraq and Kuwait, and we welcome him home and thank him for his service.
Thank you. Commissioner Agnes?
Yeah. First of all, welcome to our new county manager, Mark Watson. Look forward to your service to the county, your continued service to the county. Been a great asset to this county, and I know we can continue to look forward to great things. You made mention of some great things that were accomplished last year. I think it's imperative that we recognize that Cindy Coto has officially retired, and I certainly think her leadership over the past 10 years has led this county to new heights. And Mark, I know that you will work to continue to develop our staff and our department heads to lead us on to even greater things. With that, I just want to wish Cindy Coto well in her retirement, and I wish everyone a good evening.
Commissioner Russian?
I'd like to echo Commissioner Agnes's comments and wish everyone a good night.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes, congratulations to Julie and Mark. We thank you for your service and continued service to the county. And knowing you are adorned with that purple and orange, being a loyal ACC member and a Wolfpack fan, I have about 30 pages here relative to your coaching. No further comments. Have a good evening.
Commissioner Rafe?
Chief Deputy Elmore, I would like for you and the three deputies in here to escort me out of the, since I kept us about 20 minutes longer on something that may end up being trivial, but I do appreciate the commissioners and the football fans putting up with mine, just trying to do the best of what I think needs to be done. But I certainly understand what we're dealing with.
Thank you. And again, I want to welcome Mark and look forward to working. When we first even started talking about, before you applied, I said, I have a concern. What are we going to do for leadership in HR? Without taking a breath, he says, we've been training Julie for 16 years, and she'll start her day, first day, and not miss a beat. That impressed me because that's what leaders do. They prepare their staff for as we grow forward, so I look forward to your leadership in that, and I appreciate it. I do want to thank Cindy Coto for her years of service with Union County, and I wish her well in her retirement. And let's go watch some football. Okay? A motion to adjourn.
Aye.